First of all, good evening. I would like to open this special meeting on the West Carroll Board of Education. And we need to hold a call please. Okay, Leslie? Here. Joe?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Tom?
Present.
Ian John?
Here.
We have on our session this evening, work session, and oh, by the way, this is Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. It's been a while since we've been here, most of us have been on the news. So we are going to start with our work session, and the topic is remainder of the 2020-2021 school year. And I will now turn this over to Dr. Michael.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We appreciate you being here tonight. This is a meeting that we've been looking forward to as we've been talking about getting our kids back on March 15th. And if you know, this meeting has been recorded for future broadcast. I need help up there.
Sounds like maybe.
It does. So today's agenda, we're here to give you an update of all the materials that we've received, especially lately. Things change on a daily basis, sometimes more than once. We're going to talk about our current hybrid model, our quarantine guidelines, social distancing that we will be able to maintain or not in different areas, and what that means. Testing, we're talking about state testing, what online looks like, social emotional learning, and fourth quarter, because I know we've had a lot of questions about what will go on in the fourth quarter at the high school level. So just so a quick catch-up on what's been happening, as you know, the governor gives us updates every week, at least twice a week, if not sometimes more. Sometimes they're a surprise to us, sometimes we don't know what's coming, most of the time. And recently, he's offered the school staff vaccinations. So we did receive our last vaccine this past Friday, and we're very grateful for that. And it was offered to the staff and hopefully to bring our kids back to school. We have been hybrid for several weeks. We did try to open in the fall. That did not go very well for us. We had some staffing issues, we had a spike in our cases, and then our highest spike actually happened when we came back from Christmas break. So just to share that with you, and we all do really want our kids back. So we're here to give you information, and the Board of Education information that we've received over the past several weeks, mostly most recently because, like you said, it does change every day. And then we also want to hear from you. So our current hybrid model, and this is important, right now we have approximately eighty percent of our students who attend two days a week, and twenty percent of our students are here through school's PLP or fully online in our online program. And then Fridays are used for various things. We have office hours for teachers, we bring small groups of students in, our English-language learners commit for services, we have special education services, credit recovery services where our high school kids are coming in, other student services, related services, and also deep cleaning. So on 2/18, just to backtrack a little bit, on 2/17, we had a board meeting that was online, and I was asked by one of the board members how we were feeling about school, and I said I was leaning towards hybrid. And I got this notice on 2/18, because every day something different comes in, and this was the release I was waiting for from Montgomery County Department of Health. I'm going to read it to you, because it specifically says, "Public Health Dayton and Montgomery County recommends that K-12 school quarantine procedures allow those students, faculty, and staff that may have been exposed to person with COVID-19 in a classroom setting or on the school-provided bus. They do not need to self-quarantine, provided that that exposure took place in a classroom or on a bus, and we were all wearing our face masks." So that's great news for us. So they also sent us some additional information. This exception does not apply for sports and extracurricular activities, and all other exposures that happen have to follow the quarantine guidelines that have been set forth by the Department of Health. So if there was a potential exposure, students need to be monitored for 14 days if this exposure happened in the classroom or the bus, but it doesn't mean they have to quarantine from school. However, it does mean they need to quarantine at home. So if your student has a job or does something outside of school, they would have to quarantine if you received that phone call from one of our nurses notifying you of a potential exposure. And like I said, we will make the phone call, and always, if there was a potential exposure, you should always watch for 14 days to make sure there's not any symptoms. And this is the big one for us with our school. Well, if they didn't see it in their document they sent to us, it was to be implied that the current guidelines for social distancing for schools has been three feet. And that's what we've been using since we've been hybrid for quite a while. My nurses may even speak to that. It's been several weeks, though, and it's worked well for us. We wouldn't be able to, if our students came back, maintain the two to three feet, because we have 600 students that are in school's PLP online. So we cannot maintain social distancing in the cafeteria or other locations in the building, so we want to be upfront about that. But we can maintain quarantine rules, which is the 14 days, as I mentioned, and our cleaning protocols, hand sanitizing stations, mask, and everything that we've been doing will continue. So this is where it helps us. So we did receive our vaccinations. We just finished our clinic on Friday, and as you can see up here, for folks who've received the COVID vaccine, for the two-dose vaccine, it's 14 days after your last dose that we have our immunity. So that actually puts us at March 13th, which is great. Also, some other things, just in case you're able to get it as well, you're within three months of your last dose, you've remained asymptomatic, and if you don't do that, you do have to quarantine. So Dr. Myers?
All right, okay, everybody. Sorry, sorry. So I'm just briefly going to talk about testing. On this slide, you can see, and I think the board members have this in front of them, we have two windows of testing. The first one is in yellow. That's our English-language drugs testing window. Each one of those tests has two parts, and each part, the student is allowed 90 minutes each. So it's three hours of test, and what we're projecting right now, there's been some additional flexibility from the state to allow the window to be five days longer, but we think we can get all of the English-language drugs tests accomplished within that yellow band of April 12th through the 23rd. If we need to, we can go into April 30th, those additional five days that you see that are actually in orange up on the screen, but we feel confident that we can get those done by the 23rd. The state puts ELA in one bin, and then the other window is math, science, and social studies. That's not my creation, that's just the state's. So we will begin math, science, and social studies testing until April 26th, and that will go through May 14th, because, like I said, we have that additional five days of testing. Usually, we would have to get that done in 10, but we're looking at five solid weeks of testing based on what we're looking at, since the state has not changed anything. We're just going to move to the next slide here in a second, but to give you an idea of actual numbers, we had roughly 4,700 assessments that the state has deemed we should continue to take this year. So that's the breakdown by the building of how many tests we will give at each building, and it's roughly around 4,700. Next slide, please. Now, like we just said, these are required by the state, they're also required to be in person, we cannot give them remotely. So there's been some legislation out there that has been proposed, like House Rule 67, and we know that the Ohio Department of Education submitted a federal waiver. Those things are not moving forward. So testing is on, we're going to return, we're going to have to give these tests. Like I said, it's at least a solid five weeks. We may need to go into a sixth, we'll see. I'm hopeful and optimistic that we can get this accomplished within five. Next slide, please. So here's the real breakdown. We have 500, we have over 600 students online that are participating in our school's PLP program. Of those six, over 600, 533 need to come back for testing, since, as I just mentioned, it can only be done in person. The state does not allow us to give this remotely. So we see a bunch of numbers up here for each grade level. That's how many students are currently online in each grade level, but then the red squares are the students that have to return for testing, since testing begins in third grade, and even seniors may have to take a test. So if you add all those magical numbers up in red, it comes out to be around 533. We are going to need to use those Fridays to bring students in. We distributed 1,700 Chromebooks to our community to support families that were without a device. That has just put us in a situation where we need to consolidate and really group testing and have longer testing sessions. It's not cruel and unusual punishment, it's just longer than we would have done in the past. But we're going to have to use Fridays to reach out to those 533 students and test along those days in order to provide the opportunity for all of the students, in person and online, to take the assessments. Any hidden questions?
Just for the parents, so you know, we've met with legislators, we had our student group, Ashton's here tonight, he's our student rep, trying to have these tests wait, because we feel that when the students come back, we want to have that full order to work with them and not have state tests interfere with that. Unfortunately, the governor and the federal waivers, it's just not happening. So we want you to be aware that that's happening. And then social emotional needs too.
I just want to speak briefly. In regards to social emotional learning in January, I did a presentation to the board about what we were doing, how we were addressing our social emotional needs for our students. And as this year has progressed with the pandemic, our students have faced a lot of trauma, and some of those things are listed up here. Losing family members, economic loss, their lack of confidence academically because they're at home learning, and that's not always the best environment for them, anxiety and depression. And so, and this is not just West Carroll, it's in any schools, this is across the entire world, where our students have spent a great deal of time at home. We also really believe that we, here at West Carroll, we put a high importance of our student and teacher relationships, and that was reflected in that data in January that I had presented. Our adults also have SEL needs, social emotional learning needs, and so by having our students in class a little bit more frequently than right now, we're able to provide some of those services. And this is a short list of, again, what our school district can provide our students to give support on with our behavioral therapist from Samaritan Health. We are getting ready to partner with Dayton Children's with their Youth and Family Services. We are just starting SEL practices, but we are implementing those in the classroom. And we just believe that by our students actively participating in class, that student-teacher relationship is very vital, and it is also something that's very positive here at West Carroll.
So lastly, we have fourth-quarter events, and I am one of those happening, I'm here to speak to the high school events for our seniors.
Good evening. We are excited this year. Last year, fourth quarter, everything was pretty much, you know, the progress was good on. This year, we are looking at things, we just really got some information last week, so we're sort of just now putting things together, and it's sort of in the new stages, but we've worked very quickly. I want to thank Melissa Fields for her part in this, especially with prom. We do have a venue scheduled, we are looking at a formal dinner with music, there'll be areas where it's got a beautiful backdrop of pictures. It will only be, we were not able to find a venue that was large enough that would host enough students, where we could have the whole junior-senior classes like normally. So it will be senior students only, of course, masks must be worn. We are still waiting, what we don't know is, the governor comes out on TV and says, yay, we can have proms, and yay, we can have graduations, but then what he doesn't say in public is, but yay, you still have to maintain your three to six feet social distancing, and yay, you still have to do all that contact tracing that is required if students, if somebody were to be positive with COVID-19. So we're still waiting a little on some guidance from the governor. We do know, I have met with most of these principals in Montgomery County, several in Miami, Green and Dark County, and there are, well, nobody's dancing, because as you know, you're face-to-face, we can't control whether students keep their masks on, and if we cannot appropriately do contact tracing, then everybody there would have to quarantine. So therefore, we're not able to do the dancing. But we do have what I think is a lovely thing planned, like I said, it is in kind of the infancy stages. I have a group of parents that I've been talking with a little bit, getting some of their feedback. What I want people to understand is, this is not necessarily what kids want, it's not necessarily what parents want, but for the group over here that wants to be able to dance and have fun and be normal, and like we do, there's also, you know, this faction that they want their kids to be safe, and they want to be able to socially distance. So we're kind of drawing a middle-of-the-line road here, so that all of our students can take part in this in a safe manner. That being said, we're very excited about graduation. We're definitely going to have a graduation. We're still not sure what it looks like, still waiting to hear back from UD upon their approved variance. They did only have a 10%, which was about 300 people, and then they said that they were, they're going for a, gosh, waiver, what, 30%? 30%. And that would certainly give us a lot more room, and really, a lot of parents couldn't be able to go. So we're very, very hopeful that we will be able to graduate at UD. But if we can't, we have order chairs for an outside graduation, if that's not an option, and our date is still, will be May 27th in our stadium if we can't be at UD, and with the 28th and the 29th, it's rain dates, still at 7:30 PM. Any questions?
So you'll be providing updates to the parents in your newsletter and one at a time?
Yes, yes. As soon as we, you know, and like I told the parents in my emails that I was, we're kind of going back and forth today, is that tomorrow, they could say, nope, we're not allowing any of this. I do not anticipate that, I think that we're still going to be able to, I think that everybody wants our kids to be able to take part in these activities, but right now, this is where we are.
Okay, thank you. And just parents, so you know, as far as graduation, there are some districts in Montgomery County that already have received their waivers for their locations. We find this out as we talk to superintendents, so you might hear that some are already planned. We are waiting, so we are very hopeful that it will go through here quickly, and we'll be able to have our graduation as we do at UD, so. So tonight, which, what we're recommending, or what I'm recommending, is I've worked with principals, cabinet, I've talked to my staff, is that our students return fourth quarter to school. And we are recommending a four-day week to maintain the services that we've mentioned for the 600 students that are not here daily, and they're on school's PLP. We want to be able to provide services for all of our kids, because even if they're not physically here, they're still ours. And we also need that time, as Dr. Meyer said, for state testing. So our recommendation, and this will be up for discussion and for public comment for 45 minutes, is a four-day return. That is all we have for the presentation tonight.
All right. We will move on to item number four, which is signed as a public related petition that I just, although we have a lot of 45 minutes for our review right now, five minutes maximum per individual. On the back of your agenda is our board policy 0169.1, that you have heard of public participation. I won't bore you with a lot of that, but please adhere to it, be respectful, responsible, ensure you all can do that. We would love to hear from you, so both of these lines are open. Please maintain a six-foot distance as you come down.
And if you have questions, I do have staff, there is staff here to answer questions.
Hello, thanks very much. My name is Darren Davy. I appreciate all the work you guys have signed up to get things going back in this year. I fully support bringing kids back at four days a week. I understand having that fifth day is important to clean and whatever else might come on, so definitely support that. I had that concern over the past couple months in terms of communicating with parents what's going to happen, and I know there's newsletters that go out there, but in preparing for tonight, I looked at the website just to see what kind of information is out there, and it seems like things were great until maybe September, and then at that point, the website just kind of fell off. I mean, everything we go to on the COVID tab, for example, the re-overing plan has been removed. I mean, I understand the plan's changed, but you could at least put some ideas on there, like this is what we're looking to do, these are concerns, and just to just yank the link out there, I mean, that's not very helpful. We've seen a lot of schools around us have four days already, and they've been doing that for quite a while. So one question I'd pose is, why hasn't taken us so long to do that? When I understand, I mean, we knew that the cases were going to be high after Christmas, we knew that was going to happen, but other schools continue to meet, and I just, that question would be, what took us this long to come back to four days a week? Just again, on the website, I mean, every link on there except for the number accounts have been removed, or even the ones, what to do when you're sick, I mean, it goes to nowhere. The protocols for parents, I think that's dated in September, re-overing plan's been removed, the public health in Montgomery County link doesn't work. So again, communicate with parents as to what your plans are, if there's, even if you're not 100% of what's going on, like just letting us know, like what you're thinking about. And when it comes to prom and graduation, I would encourage you to have several plans, have those in place and ready to go, because if Plan A doesn't work, we'd like to have Plan B, C, whatever, ready, and I know that takes extra work and effort. We'd really like to see the kids have something as the year finishes up, and again, just continue to share with us your ideas, even if they're in the works, because that gives us a greater chance. Thank you.
Thank you. So I can address your four days with, at least the districts that I'm aware of, some of the districts have the ability to maintain the social distancing and might have had their elementary kids in, but then had their older kids, middle school and high school hybrid. Kettering had the four days, but they were bringing their students in in pods. So every district had a little bit of a different twist to it. What we found where we can maintain consistency was the hybrid every other day. So at one point in time, basically every district, there might be a few out there that did not have to close, but all of us have had to close for one reason or another, readjust, and our goal is always to look at fourth quarter. So our highest spike in data for positive cases was actually after Christmas break. So that would have been at the very beginning of third quarter. That's a great question, thank you. I don't know why those links aren't working, I see them on here, so my communications person's right here, they should be able to. We'll take care of that tomorrow.
I'm Raskin, I'm one of the school service. We also hit spikes, that first week that we returned to school after everybody had been at home, we had a house of four kids replaced in quarantine, and then the following week, there was a hundred-nine spike. So those were huge spikes, and that's what we hope down the core. Thanks, given. Thank you, Chris.
Hello, I'm Mary, and Jen, her baby. A couple of things that I just wanted to comment on. One was just the better use of our technology. Once we started Zooming, that whole first quarter, you know, we seem to have gotten that down. So when we did try to go back, the kids were being quarantined, I have a lot of questions why that wasn't being utilized to keep those kids, you know, plugged in daily while they were at home, especially ones that were quarantined that were not actually sick. So I'd just like to hear a little more about the use of the technology, the use of technology, and also to the board, just wanted to comment that the use of the Zoom board meetings in these last, especially two months, as we were really getting, you know, we had to get serious about coming back in March. But you guys were meeting on Zoom, and I found as a consumer, the links were hard to find. If you weren't actively looking at how to participate in a board meeting on Zoom, the average parent is probably not going to find that. I found it because my son is part of the board. He'd say, hey, Mom, remember, they put it here. I just feel like that kind of showed some, maybe a lack of transparency. Also, you know, the last meeting that happened two weeks ago, I don't think the majority of parents would have even considered that we were not going back. And so when talk happened that this was not ideal, that communication, again, not even had to have the yes-no answer right away, but just that here is what you want to do, and here are the barriers to making that final decision, and I think just that open communication would just be something you need to work on improving in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I'm fine with the parents, I am a parent of a high school student and a second grader, and I just wanted to take a minute to say, number one, of course, of a parent that's spoken on it, lack of communication, and to hear last week that it was even a chance for the kids to not go back was kind of like shocking, especially for my little, who has to go to daycare. My son, whose age, he's a new eight, said... My son, whose needs, he's a new eight, says, so I can go to daycare with my classmates, but I can't go to class with my classmates. So I think that it's just really hard for the kids to understand why they can be learning at daycare but not in school. So I think that's something to really think about when we're making our decisions on whether the kids are going to go back or not. Also, with the end of the year activities, I think it's just important to remember, all of the seniors last year, they missed out on graduation and things like that. The seniors, the shared, they missed out on that fourth day. So I think it's just really important for us to keep that in mind when we're trying to make these plans for the end of the year activities for everyone. Also, with going to a four-day model, when parents were expecting to go back five days, that does raise a little bit of concern having such a short amount of time to find care for this Friday. I understand that the PLP students need to come in for state testing and things, and that's still maybe going to change, I feel like. But the kids who are taking the risk in coming into the school, I feel like should have the time, access, I mean. I don't want to say that, you know, the kids who chose PLP aren't important, because I do not feel that way at all. But to give less than two weeks to let daycare figure out how to care for kids on Fridays is not a really fair window of time. So I guess just if you can keep communication open, because I guess, like I said, I had a lot of questions for going back. It felt like every newsletter we was getting was saying four to quarter, go back, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, it's Karen, I'm working on, I just wanted to know what's the plan? I want to kind of hear, you know, are we going to be back in the same situation that we were in in November, when we went back for a week? And then you got a notice saying, don't come back to school tomorrow?
I hope not.
So I want to know kind of what kind of guidelines or what you guys are going to be looking at, so because I'm in kind of the same situation where work is a crisis community, now, I'm not going to be able to do that. You know, there's not a lot of daycare options for the little kids, so for stuff like that, I mean, the communication time's really been lacking since the beginning of the year. The beginning of the year, you've got all kinds of Zooms and TMA with the parents to make sure that the parents got to say their piece. You know, the board, I mean, we haven't really worked for me, we haven't got some thing, how we deal or work together to kind of figure it out. So I just want to make sure that we don't come back, get our little kids hooked up, that, you know, they're going back to school, and then we later have to care away from them.
So our nurses have been working on how to monitor students. We really have to rely on our parents to help us make sure our students, if they have symptoms, they're letting us know. Because, and they can help me with how the context spread between the kids. I do know that with our numbers, our numbers have decreased. I mean, I know they were much higher when we came back in November. They were even higher just in February, they were around 12,000, I think, in this state, now they're down to less than 2,000. So our hope is that we're able to do this and get the four days or five, or what, you know, whatever happens tonight, and keep the kids in, and then come back to a normal year, but that's our goal, so. Our nurses might be able to add on to that. I think all everything that, as far as the numbers go, is driven by the county, what the counties are recommending. So we do lean on that a lot of our guidance? Yeah, and I think, I think unfortunately, our guidance comes late. I mean, these nurses are in meetings every other Monday, we're in meetings weekly. Our guidance doesn't come like it seems like it does on TV. It, you guys get bits and pieces of it. It literally comes multiple times a week and changes multiple times. So for us to make any kind of decision, it's like throwing the dice and hoping that, you know, we win with the decision we make. But we knew, as we were getting closer to fourth quarter, we were going to get guidance from Montgomery County Department of Health, Ohio Department of Health. And the other thing is the state testing, we were, you know, we were waiting on that too. That is something we were really hoping, there was a couple bills out there to stop, that when our kids came back, we would be able to have them fully for that last quarter. So, well, it might look like we're not communicating, I don't want to give you information, literally the information that came out on the 18th, I received four copies, by noon with changes in it. So that's something that you need to understand, I'd rather give you correct information than incorrect information. And it just comes out that way, and then these ladies who are in these meetings on Mondays hear it as well. So we're not trying to hide anything, we're just trying to make it as accurate as possible.
Honestly, honestly speaking, there's no way of choosing that we wouldn't have to close down again. Anybody who's closer than that three-foot spacing is going to have to quarantine at home. In middle school and chorus classes, there's not the spacing between kids, they're sinking. It could be whole classrooms that need to be sent home. On the buses, there's going to be kids who are within two feet rather than that three-feet limit. In PE, the kids are in each other's space, so I just want the public to be aware that we probably still are going to have quite a few kids who get quarantined outside of school. And that will be fourteen days under the current standards.
That's if they have symptoms, correct? They're quarantined if they have symptoms.
No, actually, let me explain the difference. If you have COVID disease and have symptoms, or if you get a positive COVID test without symptoms, it's a ten-day isolation. So there's the difference between isolation and quarantine. If you're, if you have symptoms and then you get the COVID test, the ten-day starts on the day you had symptoms. If you did not have symptoms, then your isolation starts on the day of the positive COVID test. People who are exposed to the person that has, that have positive COVID test, their quarantine starts on the day that they last had contact with that person. Quarantine lasts for fourteen days.
Okay, can we just briefly clarify? I thought the recommendation was to not have to quarantine if the exposure within a classroom, you thought it was just with a sport?
And if they're wearing a mask.
I thought that's what we wrote.
The county direction and the state direction is within three or greater feet, but we're not going to almost be able to take out three or greater feet.
Three or greater feet, both parties wearing a mask?
Yes.
Okay.
Both masks, so how do we come to decide if we need to quarantine? We're supposed to have them on, if that doesn't do away with it.
This was copied right out of, Denise, can you put the slide back up with the quote from Ohio or Montgomery County Department of Health, please? Yeah, that's the most recent of you. I mean, this is what happens, this stuff we get, it changes and changes and changes. I'm not a medical person, and I don't pretend to be, so these young ladies, this is exactly copied right out of the document. Sure, Public Health Dayton and Montgomery County recommends that K-12 schools quarantine procedures allow those students, faculty, and staff that may have been exposed, that's the part about the may have been exposed, to a person with COVID-19 in a classroom setting or on school-provided buses, do not need to self-quarantine, provided that the exposure took place in the classroom or on a bus and all parties were properly wearing masks. Here's the part, here's the part that doesn't, it doesn't say. So these young ladies had a meeting that afternoon with the Department of Health, and the quote from the medical director was, "The spacing is implied."
So this is the information that we get, this is why we're trying to share it with you. But other schools are doing this, somehow managing this. Are they measuring?
Like do what's written, not what someone tells you verbally.
Right, do what's written.
It's not earlier, this is, this, and then this came, and their meeting was after I left this, so.
Right, but what's the policy?
Right.
This is the policy.
Right, that's the policy.
We're not measuring every kid every day, all day. Other schools, there's no way they're measuring kids on the bus.
We actually, I actually complained to the health district, I said, this was poorly written, and if it's a three-foot distance, they need to write it in there, because we would end up having the exact how we're having right now.
So you have to follow.
Well, just know that it's a possibility that if your child's exposed, they're going to go home for fourteen days. So, you know, we're going to do the best we can to keep the kids as well, we want the kids here, that's our goal. Unfortunately, this is the stuff that we get, and, I mean, I'm just, that's why we're here, we're putting it out. I'm not hiding anything, this document changed four times from the time I got it to the time I put it in the slideshow, and one day before lunch, so.
It just makes no sense.
I mean, our numbers on quarantining have dropped significantly, and that's our hope, is we'll be able to keep those numbers low. I think the most important thing, and the governor does say this in his updates, is this mask, that our kids wear the mask. The kids have been doing a fantastic job with their masks. You know, if they have it down in the classroom, you just have to kind of give them a little reminder, they're doing a really good job, so hopefully this isn't going to be an issue.
I'm one of the school nurses, and I just have two quick things. This is exactly as she said, we all were thrilled because we're like, oh, yay, we don't have to worry about social distancing and quarantining anymore. And then in our meeting, which is all the school superintendents and the county, they're able to be on the meeting, and all the school nurses, there were multiple of the school nurses that asked for clarification, and we were told by the health department that we are, they are expecting us to just, the social distancing, three to six feet is implied, even though it's not written there, we still have to follow the three to six feet. The second thing I want to make sure parents understand, because this is from the health department also, I don't know who's have it out there, if they are considered in close contact in the classroom, but they don't have to quarantine from school or the bus, they will, you parents still will be notified by the school nurse, and the students will still have to quarantine for fourteen days. From sports, if they are high schoolers and they have a job, they can't participate, they can't go watch their friends play games, they still have to quarantine for fourteen days outside. And we also, I mean, I told the health department, we've several of us told the health department, parents are going to give a huge pushback on that, but that is following directions from the health department. So I just want parents to be aware of that.
So that, I mentioned that earlier, my remote is, has died, so. Yeah, I did mention that earlier, so I gave the example, if your child has a job, or, you know, needs to go for fourteen days, they'd have to quarantine from them. Now, that's just, that was part of this document, it is in this slideshow as well. But they can come to school if the contact happened in class, so it's very confusing, it's very convoluted. The nurses, I guess the most important takeaway with this is the nurses will contact you if your child's been exposed and let you know what you need to do. That's how we've been doing it, has worked very well for us. But if you hear from them, I mean, you're going to get the phone call, the notification, if there was an exposure, but if you directly hear from them, that's what you need to listen to.
And they have no going to school, I expect.
If the contact happened in a classroom or on the bus. Or it's three feet away.
Right, if it's like three or greater, we do it. Right, but the lunch is a habit. And the lunch is six feet, because they are unmasked in the lunch, so that's definitely six feet.
We didn't make these rules, so guys, we're just trying to, we're trying to get the clarification. You know, it comes out in a format that is, I mean, to me, when I read this, somebody sent it down here, we were thrilled, we're like, woo-hoo, there's no more quarantines and the class isn't on the bus. And then we have another meeting, and then we find out more. So, yes, I do know other schools are doing it, other kids are getting quarantined. I did call some of the other superintendents who brought their kids back to school already within the past few weeks, and their numbers spiked, so be prepared for that. My plan is not to close, so that's my plan. I'm Esther Casters.
Hello, my name's Casters, I'm a high schooler. I heard something in all of this discussion that I'm hoping you guys really take heart. And that is the fact that parents keep getting dumped. And while you may not be intended, you may not be what you want to do, it is what happens. Parents are doing the teaching at home. Parents are now expected to be the people that contain these parenting rules. Parents are going to be the ones that have to figure something out what they do. Parents are going to have to be, it keeps coming back to parents. And while I'm respectful, I have a difficult job, so parents, we have jobs at too. We don't always have the luxury of dropping everything, but we have to for our kids. Where is the school taking the extra step for the kids? I haven't seen it for this whole COVID second, third quarter. Now we're here to come the fourth quarter, and what I expect for trying to do your best, I don't think you're taking everything for the kids and the extra step for them completely into account. You're checking the box for yourselves, and stop looking at yourselves all the time first. Start looking at the kids and the parents in the district, their pay incomes, through tax dollars, and through their days and nights. And I respect what you're saying, but I don't feel the respect on the parents from the administration of the Louisville County for the other direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I just want to segue off my childcare providers. It has been rough, and we have followed these, we give these rules too, and we turn around overnight. We never stop providing care for these kids. Day one, we're not shut down, we made it work. Pandemic care, we made it work. We have dealt with multiple kids from multiple schools and multiple grades in one room. Y'all couldn't put teachers on, you couldn't say first grade, here's your schedule, no. We have made it work, we have supported these families. We have been addressing social, emotional issues from March through to last year. These kids are hurting, they are suffering. You want a good, I invite you to come, spend a day with me and see these kids, and I will tell you all of their stories. It is heartbreaking, they are, they need to be back. And I, again, segue with Mike, it is hard. We are, we, the childcare providers are supporting these parents, and we are tired. We talk in our leadership meetings every week, and we say, we're living in a, we are living in a historical event. We know, my organization, we are going to live back pride on what we have done. We know that we can be proud of everything we have done. Hopefully, I hope that you guys will be able to live back the pride on everything that you have done for these kids and parents.
Hi, I'm Karen from Dexter, I'm a third grader, and a lifelong West First School District student, and then community member. I just wanted to say a couple of things, I've heard a lot of people talking about communication. I am a, I'm an essential worker, I work in healthcare. Thankfully, I'm in a position where I've been able to do temporary telecommuting to be home with my son who has special needs. He, I work for TriHealth in Cincinnati, they're a great system, and I bring that up because I feel like, I've worked for several healthcare organizations, I feel like they've done a great job throughout the last year with communication. I understand, I've lived, the everyday-to-day changes with guidelines and all these things, and I think that the best thing you can do, while I realize that there's downside, is to just communicate as you know. Even if it changes every couple of days, I'm in a position where my, my director thinks that I'm coming back to work on five days a week on March fifteenth. My temporary telecommuting ends at the end of March. TriHealth got a lot of resources together, I'm Tri-Health got a lot of resources together. I'm very blessed of all these different childcare opportunities where they can do remote learning. And if that works for my child with special needs, who have autism, he cannot go to a daycare environment. So I think one of the things that, that you need to understand is that this last minute stuff like this is really difficult, especially on essential workers out there who do not have another option. And with daycares, most of them cannot do one day a week care for children or, or volunteer for the remote learning. So I see one of the risks and I understand all the benefits and I, I I'm supportive of the decision, whichever way it is. I think one of the risks in keeping them out of school on the fifth day of the week is that you're going to have haphazard childcare for students whose parents are working five days a week or have to work five days a week. And then you're going to have potentially more exposure of those students to other students, um, without masks, probably, without social distancing because there aren't many options for those last couple of weeks. I understand, again, I'm supportive either way and I appreciate everything that everyone's done. I know this has been hard. I've lived it. It's been healthcare and other decisions are hard. There aren't any good decisions, but those are just some things that I wanted to share.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brianne P. Fleming. I have a granddaughter in the ECC. Um, I want to start by saying thank you to all of the staff at the ECC because they have been there for these kids. It's been a life changer for my granddaughter, to be fair. When we shut down for the weekend half, it was devastating to me. She did great. Her teachers are there, they're there every day. What I'm about to say, I'm going to qualify by saying that it was on social media. I don't know the morassity of it. I don't know who said what. It's been implied, rumors are going around that teachers are threatening to call out F M L A if you're forced to go back full-time, whether that's four days, five days. What I would ask the board is if, if there is any truth to that, if there are educators or staff members who, after you all make the decision for these kids, that I hope you'll make it, they're the best possible interest, putting them back in school as much as you can. If there are staff members, educators, custodians, food service workers, I don't forget that, if they want to play that part, I would ask that when it comes time to renew contracts, that you take a long, hard look at it. Because everybody, so far in my experience with the ECC, everybody there is there every day for those kids, like, no spite. They are there. They're doing their job or the reason that they had to education personally. So I get it that you're scared of COVID. I too am a healthcare worker. I'm a nurse. I'm fortunate. I work from home. We're a great company. But if I had to, I'd go back to the bedside in a month's second. If I have the opportunity to be absent, I will take that opportunity when I can. But if you decide not to, and then you decide that you don't want to put yourself at risk because of certain programs, because of whatever goodies they bring in, Lord knows, they won't buy them all, then you need to step back. You need to reevaluate your position and board and the administration needs to reevaluate those contracts under a hurry.
Thank you. I'm going to speak to you all because I do need to speak up for my staff. My staff has been outstanding about coming to work every day. As you pointed out in the ECC, it's been the same in all of the buildings unless they've actually gotten sick, which of course, at that point, we have to follow the rules. But none of my staff has taken advantage. None of my, my staff are here. They want to be here for the kids. They're working hard. They're, they're teaching the kids remotely. They're, they have the kids in class. They do small groups on Friday. So you said it, social media is, this has been probably one of the worst, um, rumor mill items out there. And I will defend my staff to the end. They have been phenomenal through this whole thing.
And that's wonderful, but I will tell you that where the rumor, wherever the rumor started, there was a greater truth. I don't know what it is. I don't know who it is. I'm going to, like I said, qualify you by saying in social media, it's out there. But I would hope that if that's something that you see, that you put it to the top of it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Nunnery. Um, my daughter is a high school student. Um, I have a few questions and I'm hoping to get a couple of clarifications. Um, we talked about end of course exams. Um, I know that when we did a parent-teacher conference with high school, that they weren't sure yet what that was going to look like. Granted, that was on February 12th. So I'm wondering when that clarification is going to be made known so that students can prepare. My daughter, for instance, wasn't able to take end of course exams for first semester because we didn't do it. And that negatively affected her grade.
Yeah, we did it.
They did not take.
Oh, you're talking the exams in the class. We did the end of first day test.
Right, but we didn't do first semester exams and it negatively affected her grades. And I understand that there is rules and regulations that are being handed down next state. You don't have full control, but that's part of the communication that we need, especially the high school students. These kids are, some of them are looking at having specific grade point averages, having certain places in the class, and that's dependent on having those opportunities in order to better and maintain their grade. Quarantine clarifications, you mentioned that we had the highest spikes in number of students that quarantined when we came back after first quarter. I'd like to know whether or not those quarantine regulations that were in place then are the same ones that are going to be in place now?
No.
Okay. So I think that's part of the thing that needs to be considered when you're talking about fear of closing down the school. My understanding was that quarantine regulations back at the end of, uh, first quarter involved a lot more students being sent home.
Correct.
Also with the vaccine, is it possible that you can go to the vaccine slide for me?
Yeah, you're going to have to do it Denise, my clicker is.
So reading this, it says that you're within three months following the receipt for the last dose in the series. So our teachers and the ones of staff here have received their last dose in March. So I realize that we're still trying to get to the fourth quarter, but reading this, we're basically saying that all the teachers are going to have to quarantine next year. Am I reading that correctly?
We don't have to. We don't know.
All right.
It's a great question. We'd like to know that too.
Um, lastly, several people have spoke about the communication from the school district, from the board, from even high school coaches and different sports and everything like that. Perception is reality. And I can't stress that enough. Right now, the perception is that we are constantly getting excuses on why things don't work forward. I understand you might not know, but be clear. Don't make an excuse. I understand that things change daily. Things are changing daily for all of us, all of us. And everybody's dealing in with it, sometimes better days than other days, but everybody is dealing with it. Social media and Facebook do not help. One thing goes up and we as parents want to get involved, want to voice our opinion, want to know what's going on. We want the answers to provide to our kids because kids don't know what's going on. They have more anxiety than ever. They're suffering from depression, but instead we're faced with, well, everything keeps changing. We're trying, but we don't know. Please be transparent. Maybe even set up a group. We would like you parents, Mrs. Haffner said that she's doing it with parents for graduation and prom. Maybe they can be groups for each individual school or for the groups of schools, elementary, intermediate, high school, that the parents that want to be involved and the parents that are voicing the opinions and the parents that have been essential workers and worked through different things such as the childcare workers, such as the essential workers at the healthcare, that they can go ahead and you can use them as resources. Because right now it feels like you're looking and you're searching just within other superintendents and within local schools. And that's not necessarily the same thing that we have in West Carrollton. I understand for instance, we have more space constraint than other schools. So looking to the other schools may provide you with ideas, but you need to look and tap into all your resources. There are a lot of parents that want to support you, that want to support the schools, that want to be able to see our children succeed and build that pride in West Carrollton. But in order to do that, we need your help also. Thank you.
Um, that is the end of our forty-five minutes. Um, to the last, uh, to, to Mary. You're right. Everything has been changing. Everything is a complete disaster and it changes on a regular basis. And maybe now that things are starting to look like they're getting better, we could have some of those committees formed. Before that, our governor was not really promoting that. As you know, we were on curfew. We were, he was shutting down things left and right. So it's been a very difficult time to, in fact, I was on, on the phone with OSBA today. And I, uh, was telling him about what we were doing. And he said, I applaud you. Your board is doing what needs to be done because we have so often, they will put it in a regular scheduled meeting. There's little time to discuss. There's little time to do everything. And he said, this way you hold it out. And that was my intent, was to get the most information to all of you without having the time constraint of a business meeting. So let, let's say we're going to start March and try and turn things around a little bit.
But it's two weeks. It's just two weeks before we're supposed to be going back.
Okay. Um, the discussion, um, the following topic. So our topic has been discussing and now it's time for the board to discuss. The public is invited to observe the discussion and generally the board will take no formal action. In this case, we will. And we will act and notes will be given during the discussion topic. Um, so we need to, and I, I wanted this to happen in front of everyone. We would discuss it up here amongst us. So I would entertain your thoughts on the matter of the motion of the government for us.
Can I, can I start?
Yes, you may.
My, uh, my preference, my desire is to see our kids five days a week. Um, I know the testing is one of the concerns. So one of the questions I'm going to pose is our ability to utilize Frank Nicholas. That's a space that has a kid in it. I know we can't handle six hundred kids. I realize that. But I would wonder if Dolphins would put into using that space to allow our kids to come five days and use that for some of the P L P kids to do the testing. That would free up some space. I know space is going to be a problem no matter what we do because having the kids there every day is going to create, uh, issues we don't even know yet. So, but certainly losing two more weeks of school between now and May is not something I'm eager to vote to do. But, um, I will support four days. I will support five, but my preference is five and I would hope that I can decide this, that, um, we at least consider five days.
Uh, Ms. Julan, we have actually talked about Nicholas as a testing site for our school P L P students. No, it'll be difficult, but we have.
Thank you.
Well, thank you to all that are attending this evening. If you struggled, as I did, to hear every comment of those that came to the microphones, bear with us. I don't know what the recorded quality will be so that you can hear it played back. I think it might have weaknesses to it, but this is a very large room. We are all not polished professional speakers. Let me make a comparison for you. Those that we watch on air personalities on local TV each night, they don't speak to a microphone. They have a microphone attached to their clothing. It might be the collar of a shirt or a jacket or a dress or a blouse. And when they move their head, the distance between that microphone and their mouth is maintained. And the technical assistants are adjusting constantly to give us, the listeners at home, the best quality of that message. So I think this evening's event is the best that it can be under the restrictions that we're following by the help of our distance. Above that, I've heard from a number of teachers and residents in the last two weeks about this evening's meeting. I'm surprised there aren't more people here. By my best count, it's approximately sixty-one people excluding the board and the school staff that are the closest seats to me. The maximum in the room is one hundred and fifteen. And you say, what's that difference? A lot of things. Parents of students in our district might be at home preparing dinner or serving dinner, helping with homework. While a student was either in a building or at home today, the parent might have been working. It might have not have been an eight-hour shift. It might have been a fifteen-hour shift. Lots of difficulties. All of that goes into this complete mess that we call the COVID virus. Many of our staff members availed themselves to taking the vaccine inoculation, not one hundred percent. But that's true of our community in general as well. There are those that are eligible for the vaccine that are selecting not to take it for various reasons, one of which would be the scientific side that says, is it one hundred percent safe to take that vaccine? And the answer is no, not one hundred percent, but it's a very high percentage. And some will make that decision to accept the minimal risk to be able to satisfy the whole community need for a good health response. I've not received any information nor have I asked a specific question about how occupied our nursing staff is in our school buildings. Are these folks totally swamped with students coming to them, asking questions, talking about symptoms? Learning as much as we adults are of what that amounts to, how we react to it. If you have a high temperature, you probably should go home and have your parents, the adults in your life, take the next step, visit the local doctor, whatever it might be. These are all so many things that are building one item atop another that are distracting to what I think to be the primary mission of a public school district. And that would be to educate young people so that they will be better community members and leaders for all of us in the future. In summary, like the board member to my immediate left, I would like to have the class, the students in classrooms five days a week. But I realize there's a challenge to that. And there's been a challenge since last March. And that is not everything can be done in the time available. And that is, not everything can be done in the time available to do that. For example, for those that think, "If we go to a four-day week, the fifth day won't be productive by the students, by the community members." The school staff is going to have assigned items to take care of and an eight-hour day is not going to be sufficient to accomplish that either. But let's look at it in a different perspective. If your student had been coming to school two days a week and being at home for three days, remote learning, how does that compare to four days in the classroom and one day at home for remote learning? There's a big switch in the method of delivery of information for our students to learn and prosper. So as the community is looking at the Board of Education and the administrators in the school district to make a good decision, it's not an easy decision by any means. And the examples that I've given you tonight are just a few of many that need to be considered. Are we going to make mistakes? I fear that we are. Are we going to react to those mistakes and try to make improvements? Definitely not. But it's going to take time. And the end of this school year is so close. Will we go into June and July with students in classrooms? That's not the plan. It's to use every day, every school day, the best we can. And the "we" are leaders, students, parents, and the community in general. Because there's a number of people that live in our three municipalities that don't have children in schools. They may have in the past, maybe they will in the future. But I would like to think that they're broad-minded enough to look at these discussions and try to find points that they might share with other community members so that the net outcome is an improvement both for their community and for the students. And hopefully, late in August of 2021, students will be back in classrooms in what we perceive to be kind of a routine school day, school week, school month, a semester with meaningful parades that they can use to step forward in their educational process. Thank you for being with us this evening. I will pass to Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. I, for thirty years, I have despised, actually, state testing. And I want to make a point very clear, and that is, a lot of legislators and a lot of the hot part of education people have an agenda up in Columbus. And that agenda is to change in different ways, very slowly, but change public education. And what better way to do that than to make public education look bad? So you literally have a situation of kicking somebody when they're down. The thought of testing this year, given all the challenges, is just an abomination. And I want to make that point. I've felt this way for a long time and it is getting worse, I guarantee you. Now, for tonight's primary situation, I'm not going to go so far as what Mr. Henry said about supporting five days in, but it might sound like I'm saying that by the time I'm through. Somebody said a very, very excellent line, and that is, "Perception is reality." Well, sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't. But when the reality is, the perception really sometimes carries us farther than we should. My perception, and I don't have specific statistics on this. My perception is, a lot of students, let's hate to pick on the high school, but let's say, a lot of students are not coming in on the days that they're supposed to come in. And perhaps more importantly, they are not getting online when they're supposed to be home doing that and doing work. So it's an extreme challenge at this point that that is happening. So my question would be, are we in a crisis mode? An emergency situation, if you will, in terms of student participation in school and student learning? To the point that we maybe cannot afford to have one day off for the next ten weeks of school? I didn't specifically say that we should have a five-day week, but I told you earlier, I'm coming awful close to that. I would like to have an assurance from superintendent, and by the way, I'm waiting. Paper this morning already said what we're going to do. And that is to vote for the four-day and then the Friday become very productive with different things. But I need a little assurance that the situation with students coming into school when they're supposed to and getting online as they're supposed to with the work that the teachers are providing them, it's not as bad as I think it is and that we ask, can't proceed with a four-day. But if there's any hesitation at all around those lines, I say, "Go five days." Thank you.
First of all, thank you parents for being here. Not as many as I would have liked to have seen here tonight after the week of barrage that was happening on social media. I just would like you all to know that I know that every single one of you have a story and every single one of you are struggling. I also have a high schooler. My high schooler is the worst of the worst of our life. I stand on him every single night for four hours after working a fifteen-hour day. We're up till midnight, one o'clock, trying to get caught up on things. I want him back in school five days. But my personal life has to be different than my school board life. And the reason for that being is, I have to sit here and think about five hundred-plus employees, their safety. Three thousand, three hundred, four hundred students-ish, their safety. I have to think about the students that are just surviving, not thriving. The staff that is surviving, not thriving. I've seen teachers try. I've seen teachers just want the kids back. And for somebody to say that we don't care is wrong. From day one, I wanted our kids back in there. From day one, I wanted our full staff back in. What reality is this? Some are scared. Some will die. Now, I know all of you know somebody that's been extremely sick from this and I don't know that you know somebody who's died from this. Unfortunately, I'm pushing about twenty people that I know that have died. And some of them have been the healthiest of healthy. Marathon runners. My dad's cancer. Died. Marathon. Air Force marathon runner. Diagnosed with it, four days later dead. Again, I understand. So when we convene as a group of five or six or ten or fifteen, understand that the best interest is not only for my own family, but it's for all of yours also. To perceive that we don't care is wrong. I have laid in bed at night with my wife, who's chair of nursing at St. Clair, and listened to her talk about what they've got going on there and me talking about what we have going on here and how to fix it. I can't fix it. I can't fix a virus. But what I can do is get up in the morning, go to work, running two businesses. I work fifteen hours a day, six, seven days a week. I come in here in the evenings every other Wednesday and I try to make the best choices that I can, not only for my child, but for yours also. I know we're going to make mistakes, like Mr. Henry said. I know there's going to be, "Oh man, we should have done that," or, "Hey, we could have done that." But back when the spikes happened, we voted for continuity and tried to keep everybody on a level plane. Not in-school, out-of-school, in-school, out-of-school, part-time, full-time, some time. And also the safety of those staff members, students, and everybody else involved, community members. So please understand that we didn't take any of this lightly, not one single thing. I feel for our maintenance staff, our bus drivers, our teachers who have to clean up after every single class, who are getting paid salary, by the way, not hourly. And I know you, again, you have your story also. I feel sorry for Jav who has to organize these cleaning crews to come in and we have to continue asking and taxing those employees that are already here to clean more. I support five days. I want him back in five days. But realistically, five days does not sound like it's going to be adequate enough to keep things clean. I will support four days, but I would prefer five. I know every single one of you have a concern about your kid. Like I said, I spend three or four hours every night and that doesn't even count my wife. Some of you know my wife and she's much meaner than me. And when she stands on my son, he bucks the system one hundred percent. I hate it, I don't like it, I don't want to do it. But we get through every night and the next morning we start over, give us that same fight. So I understand what you're going through. I think it's horrible that we have to wait for somebody up in the State House to say, "Oh yeah, you could have a problem, but wait a minute, we have bits and pieces. We're only going to allow this part or that part." But we still have to conform to those rules. We just can't go rogue. We can't go rogue. We can't do it. Again, back to your safety, back to our kids' safety and back to our education. You know, the studies I've been doing on the depression side of this and the studies I've been doing on how this is affecting these kids is unknown. We couldn't look back and say, "Oh, they did this back in nineteen seventeen when the first COVID hit" or when the swine flu hit or the avian flu did. Because it's not the same. Today is different. And social media for our kids is horrible because they see all the bickering and fighting, they see all the right information and all the wrong information and that throws them into an even worse tizzy. So every night I try to deprogram my kid once again and say, "Hey, come to me and ask me questions. I'll find out for you or I'll help you find out." Well, Dad, this isn't. Just because you see it on Facebook doesn't mean it's real. Just because you see it on social media doesn't mean it's real. We never for a second said that we were going to continue to move forward with hydrants five days a week. The conversation has always been, "What can we do to get our kids back in?" Always. And I know some of you are upset because of the communication, but I know Dr. Townsend spends eighteen hours. Five o'clock in the morning, we have talked before because we're both up discussing what can happen next. You have to believe that we have the best interest of your children at heart, as we do. And sometimes it's hard. I don't know what to do because I've never seen it done before and I know you haven't either. I know you have littles, I know you have bigs. I've got a second-year OU at home, he's been home for a year. He can't wait to get out of here. But OU is restricting his program to online only. It saves us seven thousand dollars in the semester to keep him at home while he's online. That's not where I want him to be. I want him back at school. I want him back studying his degree. So understand that your kids' best interest is our interest and it always has been. And that's why I have to close this in. So thank you for coming. Please understand that you're not the only ones surviving. Because the teachers are too, the staff is too. This is uncharted territory for all of us. I can't even imagine what curriculum's going through right now. I'm trying to figure out how to get this testing in and how to make all of this work with partial online and partial PLP and parcel going to be up to two weeks and you got ten extra days. I did it, but that's got to be a logistics nightmare. So again, uncharted waters ahead of us. And you have to prepare for your kid to be in quarantine and maybe not just once. It can happen multiple times. Just because they go into quarantine doesn't mean they're safe to go back forever. And we don't even know what August looks like. There's unforeseen territories there. We have no idea. The news this morning, what do you believe again? The news this morning says that the new strands are faster, stronger, and they don't know that this current vaccination is going to cover them. So they want to give you a booster six months after you had your second COVID shot. Nobody knows. So please, I ask for your patience. If you've got questions, I know perfectly well, for two days mine did. I found out as much information as I could and I know the school secretary's answered those problems and they can answer those questions or get you in contact with somebody that can. And not all the time do the websites work. I am not tech-savvy in any way, shape, or form. I can't figure out half a word what that does. It's just too much for me. I can't tell what's going on. So I get that part. So please be patient and thank you for coming.
Okay. Thank you. It's coming to me. I have a very distinct position because I have grandchildren. I have three of which are in school. They are not in school at the state. I have one of them in school in Indiana and I have two of them in Florida. They have been in school five days a week since the end of August, all three of them. To say that one of them has not been quarantined is wrong, because she has. And I look at what's going on there and I look back because I am a coach. I teach, I coach tennis and I have my tennis kits, which I check in with all the time. And I feel sorry for all the kids in the state of Ohio because I feel like they have been on the short end of the stick. Because I've seen the other states and they're not doing what we're doing. But yet they have the same virus. So I'm not going to make this political in any way, shape, or form. I'm just saying what I have seen. I do know that Dr. Townsend started pushing and in pushing to get our staff the vaccine early in January because the governor said that he wanted all of the educators to be vaccinated. Okay, well, he can say that, but he doesn't lay the groundwork just real well. So between Dr. Townsend and Mrs. Tice, they put in long, hard hours trying to figure out how. And it was laid out, if we could get that vaccine for our staff the first of February, they could get it, again, they could get their second one the end of February and then they would be ready and have as much protection as they could to stay in the classroom with our kids by March fifteenth. Well, they were lucky because they got it all together. But that's not because it wasn't a lot of work. And when he says, "Oh, well, you know, we're going to get..." Nothing is easy when it comes to this. And we have been planning, we have been planning to get everybody, we want the kids back. I would love to see the kids back five days a week. Like I said, my grandchildren have been in five days a week. Now, they're in elementary, they're not in high school. So that does make a difference. But I want to see all the kids, all of these pirate kids, back in school on a regular basis. And I do care very much for all of the kids here and all the parents because I know full well that I have two sons that have not stepped foot in their office building for over a year because they're not allowed to come back to their desks. In fact, one of them, which works for a major insurance company, medical insurance in fact, was told that he has to schedule a time to come visit his desk. And he's home all the time. He's been in this atmosphere. So it's, the adults are... So it's, the adults are suffering, the kids are suffering, and we hear this on a daily basis. And I know all of us coaches, we check in with our kids, we check on them. And it's nice to have them, I know I had them with me in the fall. We had a tennis program in the fall, and we made it. But I will tell you that they were afraid, and I did everything in my power to make sure those kids were safe. I went the extra mile, some of the tennis coaches didn't. And I purchased separate tennis balls, so they wouldn't have to touch the balls that the other kids were using during the match. They also knew that when they came off that court, they needed to put their hands up like this because I was going to spray them down with antibacterial. And they came to me one day and they said, Coach, why do the other coaches not do what you do? And I said, I don't know. But you are going to be as safe as I can keep you. And they appreciated that. And I will do the same for the spring. Today, I put together a small, very small team, but we will have a spring team, and I will do exactly the same thing with those kids as I did in the fall. They are my kids, we will travel, we will do what we need to, we will help each other, they did, they helped each other with their homework, and I helped them get through. And they have a very tough time, and I understand that very, very much. So, tonight, we have before us a resolution or a motion. And the motion I will read says, a motion by and a second by, that the board approve the change for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year to return to four days per week. That is the recommendation of our superintendent. Do I hear any objections? All right. Then I will need a motion and a second that the board approve the change for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year to return to four days per week.
So move.
I need a second, please. Okay, you do not have a second, so the motion cannot proceed.
Let me, I would ask, I could ask for a motion to address our ability to vote for a five-day.
All right. On the floor is a motion to amend the motion and second that the board approve the change for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year to return to school five days per week. Do I have a motion? I do have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. I need a roll call, and this is to amend this motion, correct? Jeb?
Yes.
Les?
Yes.
Tom? Tom?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Don?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, so now you're going to make a motion and a second that the board approve the changes for the remainder of the school year to return to a five-day week.
Yes.
So I need a motion and a second, please.
So move.
Okay, and roll call, please. I don't do it, because I don't know what it is. Joe?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Tom? Five-day week, do you?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Thank you. Don?
Yes.
And John, my guy? So motion passes, five-o, return our students back five days a week.
Okay. When we have our direction, we will do our very best to keep all of you informed as much as possible. We will get on our website to get those things fixed, whatever needs to be fixed, and we will get them fixed. And we will stay in constant contact with all of you, as well as the rest of the district for what's coming up next. So at that point, I will ask for a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting. Roll, roll, please. Jeb?
Leslie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And John?
All right. Thank you, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, I really appreciate it. And just so you all know, somebody called the other day and said I'm from another state, actually worked in one of the states that Leslie was talking about. If I had my way, we would have never closed this period. So, and that included maybe two weeks last March. This has been hard, I care about your kids, I care about all of you, and I care about my staff, so please don't think any of this has ever been taken lightly. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.